And I want to welcome everybody and thank you for coming in to talk about and consider all the things that we'll be doing at town meeting. This is going to be an unusual, unusual meeting and we'll talk a little more about that in just a moment. I'm going to start with just a moment of silence in regard to the situation in the country today. I had a conversation with somebody that's a veteran in the police work and how annoyed they were about the whole thing and how difficult it is and how embarrassing it is that we're in the situation we are as a nation and the concern for justice for all that we see announced and demonstrated for by so many around the nation. So if we take a moment just to think about that situation and what we ourselves can do about it and then we'll go on to the evening agenda. We will, we are looking forward to having a town meeting that's going to be out of doors. We don't have all the plans in, in perfect place yet, but we do plan to be out of doors for the meeting in order to make it a low risk situation for people to come to for, in regard for the, the virus outbreak that we've been experiencing. So bear with us all and we'll give you more information about that. But we will be at or adjacent to the Berlin Memorial School. The place is right and we'll be there at 7:30 on the 22nd of June. At this point, I will, I'll say that we, we've been, had long hours of work through the winter on, on the, on the warrant for this meeting. The selectmen have spent a lot of time in preparation of that warrant and various other town officials. We have also made an effort to reduce the warrant and take some things off it that we felt could wait a while so that the warrant will be shorter and the meeting itself can be shorter. And so hopefully that's going to work out and we've also tried to put as much information as we can in the warrant that you'll get with the town report as well as in, in other things that have been published. I might add that the town report is now available online on the town's website. You can look it up there. You can read any of the things that are in it at this time. The file is exactly the same file that went to the printer. So you can, you can be reading that and preparing for town meeting on your own even before the book arrives at your doorstep. At this point, I will, I will say, who wants to comment further on the development of the warrant? Would any of the board of selectmen want to do that at this time?
I will just say that it hasn't been an easy process due to COVID. But I want to give a lot of thanks to everyone involved. Fellow selectmen, finance committee members, the capital planning committee and the administrative finance team. And like you said, the process has been shortened, the warrant. And we did have a few challenges getting the report out in a timely manner, but we heard the people at Coffee Talk who wanted it out early and we've done it. So I wanted, I just wanted to thank everyone for all the work they've done to get us to the point we're at right now.
And I would say that, that having it outside is also going to be a lot of additional work. So please thank everybody involved because this is going to be quite an undertaking.
Yes.
Yes, it certainly is going to be interesting. Are there other introductory remarks to be made in the financial area at this time?
Speaking for finance, I don't have introductory remarks. I will, I will address when we get to our section. If someone has anything else to say.
Thank you. Terrible time with things popping up on my screen at the moment. Here, I am having a terrible time. I'm having pop-ups on my screen, you know, it sets my Zoom and I'm sorry, I've been having pop-ups on my screen and it's upsetting my, my functions on Zoom. You want to start and start from the articles at this time?
Let's do that. Barry, would you like me to put the, would you like me to put the warrant up?
Yes.
Okay.
Articles one through four are all bylaws that were passed last year at the annual town meeting. They were voted by the town. We had good significant majorities on all of them and, but they have been held up at the attorney general's office because there was an issue over the timing of getting out the warrant to the, to the people. So with that situation having happened, we are, those articles still have not been cured of their problem and therefore it's been suggested that we simply put them on the warrant with the annual meeting and take action on them again and then we can put them through on this year's meeting to the attorney general and, and get that taken care of. The particular articles involved, the first is the change of the name of the board of selectmen to select board in order to be more inclusive in terms of gender. The second is the snow removal bylaw. There is, we've had a, a snow removal bylaw in the past for snow or ice being deposited on the street. And this one, the current one has a defect in it and the idea was to take care of that defect and that's what is determined by this one so that people can't put snow and ice in the street at any time that comes from outside, off of the street itself. And then section, article three is the single use bag ban which was placed up last year in regard to the plastic bags used often at grocery stores and so on. This bag ban was passed by Hudson last year. It was passed in Berlin too, but because of the attorney general thing, it hasn't yet gone into effect. And then the fourth one is the-
Excuse me, excuse me Barry, if I, if I could just interject, I didn't know if you wanted to make note of the section two under the plastic bag ban and what the motion under that would, would be?
Yes. Under the bag ban, section two has four sections and you have it up on the screen now. You'll note they're numbered 2.1, 2.2, 2.1 and 2.2. This is obviously a Scrivener's era when it was published and in order to fix that, we simply added to the motion that the sections under section two would be numbered 2.1, 2.2, 2.3 and 2.4. So that's in the, the correction of those numbers is in the motion that will go before the meeting. Otherwise, it's the same thing that we had last year. And then we have the community preservation committee plan, which is the creation of the Community Preservation Act Committee, which will deal with the recommendation of the use of those Community Preservation Act funds as they can be spent, how to be spent and that their recommendations will come to future town meetings. Until we have this committee in place, we can't spend the money even though we have already collected some of it this year. So that's a, that's a fourth bylaw passed last year by our town meeting, but it is not going into effect because of the issue over the warrant a year ago. We can take questions on any of those articles at this time and we also can, and I have a couple, a little bit more to say after we've, people have had a chance to ask questions, I'll comment on that. I'm wondering whether there are any comments from the people that are visiting or observing about any of these bylaws and the content of them and what you, what you may have for concern about them.
Mary, are there any questions? No questions? Okay.
Okay.
You want to just, folks, if you want to ask a question, just raise your hand if you're joining in a webinar format or if you want to do it in your telephone call, you'd press star nine to raise your hand.
Barry, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
Is it planned to have them all done together, voted together?
That was my next point. If we're not getting questions and, and people feel, don't feel uncertain about these, since they were all well discussed a year ago, I'm wondering whether people would be friendly to the idea of having one motion to adopt these four motions under these four articles in one vote? Would people feel comfortable with that? And I guess that, I will say that if you have comments about it, are you concerned about it or feel that we need to take any of these articles up separately, please let us know. Make a comment now, make a comment, send in a comment to the selectmen's office or to the town administrator and we can, we can act on it accordingly. But I'm, in the, in the, in the interest of making the meeting shorter, I'm considering the idea of taking one motion to cover all four of these since they were all, all discussed adequately a year ago.
You have one comment from Liz DeChera, just says that she would like that.
Let's move on to article five. Okay, article five is money for the snow and ice expense account for the current year. We often at town meeting time have to transfer some money to cover additional costs that we got through the year. The good news tonight is we expect to pass over this article because the last end of the winter was mild enough so that we did not have expenses that were so substantial as to require a town meeting action. So we expect this article to be passed over at this time. Article six refers to our purchase of the Humper Tanker Truck for the fire department that was voted a year ago. And at the time, it was voted with a sunset clause, or in other words, a time that it had to be done by, of June 30th, 2020. Naturally, these fire trucks are large, they are custom built and they often are not completed in time for that to work in one year. Therefore, we have a motion to extend the sunset clause for one more year in which time we anticipate that the completion of the, of the truck will be done and we will have it in service and so on. Anybody has a concern or an interest in that? Article seven, the economic development committee appointment and composition. When we set this up in 2018, it was to be appointed by the board of selectmen and the planning board together. And at this time, a request is being put before the people to modify that vote to make the planning board the exclusive appointive authority and that the planning board would have the authority to determine the number of members on the committee as well. This was a committee that was established by the planning board, at the request of the planning board by the town meeting, following up on our work on the master plan for economic and development in the future in Berlin. And the master plan suggested this kind of a committee that could be keeping tabs on what's happening with commercial developments in the town and could be looking forward to issues that might arise that would be of concern to the town either with existing development or future development. Are there any questions about what this is, what this entails? Now we change, you'll note we have a line in the, in the warrant that says, the upcoming fiscal year, which is July 1, 2020 to July, June 30, 2021, now we're into the normal articles of the annual town meeting warrant. And the first several of these are the ones that we usually take up together at the beginning of the meeting, from article eight through 13. These are the same articles that appear each year. They usually get a unanimous vote or nearly so and they do require town meeting action, but there is seldom any, any issue over them. So therefore we put them in one motion and there will be a motion that the, to approve all the motions on articles as printed under articles eight through 13 in the warrant. You can see those, those motions here on your, on the warrant as you have before you. Usually there's not much for questions on these and so on. The big issue is if somebody is at town meeting that's a new voter or that hasn't experienced some of this before, sometimes they might have some questions about what this all amounts to. But right now, these are all things that are familiar to those of us who have been to, have been to town meeting in the past. All of them have been passed at previous town meetings more than once. Okay, article 14. This is, this will request the town to authorize the selectmen to make contracts for services to the town exceeding a term of three years. This relates to a legal limitation on the, by the general laws and by our, the town voting it, it will give the selectmen more opportunity to provide a longer term if they determine that that is in the best interest of the town. For instance, if they're contracting with services of some particular type. I mean, in, in Berlin, we don't have trash collection, but that kind of a thing, sometimes it might be worthwhile to contract for a longer time. That's a bad example to use, I might add, since we don't have it. Article 15.
Excuse me Barry, just, just so, just so folks are clear, this pertains to only the procurement law. This is not under employment law or employment contract law. This is only procurement for supplies and services.
Right. Article 15 is outstanding town reports. If there are town reports that did not appear in the printed book, which we acted on under our blanket motion a minute earlier, this is their chance to get up and read them to the meeting and place them on the record. Sometimes we have a couple of reports read here and sometimes there are none. Article 16, this is the funding for our cable TV operation and get money from the cable companies that serve us in this regard and it's substantial funds and we have to appropriate it so that the, it can be spent for the purposes given. In this case, we have a grant for the general operation of our cable TV system in Berlin, but we also have $40,000 to do purchase and installation of audio and video equipment in the town office building so that they don't always have to carry portable cameras into every room when they're recording public meetings there. Is there anyone that needs to comment on a little bit more about what that's going to entail or how we're arranging to have it done? Is there a definite, a definite plan in place on that now, Margaret?
As far as the, the wiring?
Yeah.
There is, this is, this was brought forth pre-COVID. So this was definitely before our days of Zoom. I believe that the cable access committee is still looking at eventually getting back to in-person meetings and therefore are, they're interested in wiring the, the meeting rooms to be able to conduct them and tape them.
I would add that the PEG money, the money that comes in this fund is not usable by the town for other purposes. It's got to be used for something that's connected with the operation of the cable station and this was one that they felt would be a, a really good thing is to have the building set up so that it would be easier to do all that recording that they frequently do. Let's move on to article 17. Now, article 17 is our votes to, to create the budget and approve the budget of the town for fiscal 2021. And at this time, I will call on the finance committee for their comments about what's happened in the development of the budget and what their bills are and so on, but we also might expect that will conceivably change from what's actually printed in the book.
So do I need to raise my hand or am I on open mic?
You're on it, buddy.
Uh-oh. The thing, I wasn't saying anything. All right. So speaking for the finance committee as vice chair or acting chair, I know that Margaret has, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Margaret because she has done just a tremendous, and June, of course, have done a tremendous amount of work in helping us create this budget. It's been, certainly been a challenge. Normally we would, you know, work through January, February, March and, and kind of get everything put together and get it, get it to you Barry and we kind of clap our hands and say, hey, hey, we're all done. That's not been the case this year by any stretch. This whole process has clearly dragged out and dragged on and went in a giant cloud of uncertainty and everything, everything that people are experiencing personally with COVID is certainly happening with the finance committee and trying to crystal ball into the future and see where we're going to be. So I know that Margaret has some things that she was going to share on the screen as far as the actual budget itself. You should probably put that up at least so we can, if you would please.
Stan, do you want the revised version of your chart of your-
Yeah, so let me start by saying that we authorized a budget, was it two weeks ago? Or no, three weeks ago, Margaret, correct? So we had voted after long deliberations and lots of revisions and back and forth and come up with our, you know, come up with our budget and then lo and behold, the schools came back and said that they were going to reduce our, our assessments. So I should say the Berlin assessment and the, the Berlin elementary assessment and the Tohono assessment, as of it is fixed. There's not much, not much wiggle room with that one. So the two local schools came back and reduced their assessments by, it was about $80,000 total. So we voted last night to adjust our numbers again and that is what I believe Margaret is going to put up.
I'm sorry, the, the budget summary-
Yeah, the revised.
This is, this is the revised budget and Stan, I'll just scroll right down to the three revisions in this budget right down here.
Okay. So I still have the town warrant on my screen.
Oh, sorry. Okay, let's try, we'll try this then, hold on. My apologies.
I mean, having lived with this for months, I probably can go without it, but it's just easier to refer to them.
And how's this one?
There we go. Much better. So the shaded, the, kind of the bold shaded block there pretty much in the center is the revised numbers from Berlin Memorial, the Berlin Memorial Capital and the Tohono Assessment. And what we did was we revised, the budget that we had passed, I mean, we'll go into what, what our assumptions were on, on all of that, but the budget that we had passed, so with this reduction, we didn't actually reduce our overall budget. Help me with this, Margaret. What did we apply this money to again?
So the, the, the reduction, so when the finance committee first, when you, when the finance committee first adopted the budget recommendations for FY21, it was, it was probably just a few days before the school committee had voted to reduce the assessments. And so Stan, I'll flip over to the sources of funds here.
Yeah, please.
Okay, okay. And I'm going to make this bigger so everybody could see. Okay. So, all right, Stan, you, I shaded the, the lines that show the revisions.
Right. So I think what we basically, what we decided to do was further reduce our expected income in these categories, given the COVID, you know, situation in the world and what it's doing to our, what's it, what it is doing to our revenue sources, one of which, so the first one here would be motor vehicle excise. We reduced that even further than what we had and we did that based on assuming that folks in these troubled and difficult financial times may hold on to their cars for longer, not be buying new cars. So the tax revenue on motor vehicle excise could very well be reduced. So let's, I mean, we all need to keep in mind that what we're doing is we're just trying to make a best, a good faith, best effort and guess through, you know, it's hard to look at past numbers because this is a completely new experience and we don't know, you know, we can't say that all during the last three COVID outbreaks, I mean, this, this, this percentage drop, you know, our tax collections dropped by this and our meals tax dropped by that and we don't have any history on this. So we're making our best guess, we're making our, we've, we've done a ton of work on this, like I said, with Margaret and June doing the bulk of it and the heavy lifting, but so what we've done is basically, so what we decided to do with the, with the reduced school assessments, we decided to further curb our income rather than say adding to any budgets or, you know, reinstituting pay, you know, pay increases or hourly increases or, you know, things along those lines. And so basically we're trying to be, you know, conservative. We're trying, and, and also with further information from the state of further reduced money, just, just the overall impact of COVID is just ongoing and we're getting new information daily, weekly and none of it's good. So we're trying to be as conservative as we can and not necessarily cutting town services, but trying to do what we can, reducing revenues and hopefully it matches up with our corresponding expenses and I think we've, I think we've done that. So we started with motor, we have motor vehicle excise, we've reduced, meals tax, we've reduced. And then prior capital closeouts, what was our explanation on that, Margaret? I apologize, I forget.
Well, we were going to use a larger amount from prior capital articles that were left, that were still open that we intended to close out because the Berlin Memorial School had a large capital assessment that was on the budget. When they reduced that, we in turn reduced the amount from these prior capital articles that we were going to use.
Okay, so-
Capital articles were a school capital articles, were they not?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Correct.
Essentially using a one-time revenue source for a one-time expenditure, yes.
Correct, yes. So, and then our, and then, so assessors overlay, oh, that was, so there was a fourth thing, I apologize. So we had assessors overlay, which we added to, expect, fully expecting there to be requests, large amounts of requests for abatements, particularly from the malls and businesses. large amounts of requests for abatements, particularly from the malls and businesses. And then, I'm, we're going to assume, you know, person, personal household incomes as well, but, or personal homes as well, but we, we really jumped this, given, jumped it up, I should say, given what we expect to happen with the mall having been closed for months and where we're going to, where these companies are clearly going to be looking for some, some sort of relief. So we bumped up that assessors overlay number as well. So, Margaret, if we could go to the, to the.
Bottom?
Well, actually, I was going to say to the top.
To the top, okay.
Start at the top, revenues.
Oh, let me make it bigger too, so people can, okay.
Yeah, so I guess, starting from the top, one of my biggest, one of my biggest concerns and was the increase in property taxes last year to the, to households, to individuals. I was concerned about that for this year and concerned for people and their ability to pay their taxes, given everything that's happening. So we're really trying to keep this number, this very top line, this local property taxes use, to a number that people can hopefully live with. We know for sure that some people are going to have trouble paying these, paying these tax bills. We can't necessarily guess as to what that number's going to be. We also aren't going to necessarily reduce this numbers because we fully expect to collect those at some point. It might not be all at the beginning, but, so we didn't, we didn't say that because of COVID, we weren't going to collect, you know, as much as last year, but we wanted to try to have the impact be as, as minimal as possible, keep this under the two and a half percent as best as we could. So that number is, is 2.3% higher than last year. Comfortable with that, hoping that that is all our tax bills will actually be impacted and hopefully maybe even not that. So new growth number, we were, we were pretty conservative on that, this number, sorry.
Excuse me, Stan, could I just add that the, the FY19 to FY20 actual, last year's increase was a little over 13%. So trying to keep it down to 2.3% in line with what DOR recommends as a best practice to hopefully is going to help keep this in check.
Yeah, and trying to keep on that trend line, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a trend line for, for raising property taxes and trying to keep that at a, at that, kind of that steady two and a half percent and not be deviating up and down from that to, to avoid spikes in that. So while I don't like the fact that taxes are going up at all, you know, of course they have to. We need to pay, need to pay our staff, we need to pay our teachers, and bills don't tend to go down, they keep going up. So new growth, we've reduced, again, just based on, I mean, we have, certainly have estimates from Molly and the Assessor's Office as far as where we're generating that number, how we're getting to that number, but we, you know, we're trying to be as conservative as we can. So we've knocked that down a little bit, even from last year. State aid clearly down, and again, that's a real, that is just a real shot in the dark. We, we reduced it, it could be, it could be lower than that, we don't know, could be higher than that, but I doubt, I doubt it would be. Margaret might have a little bit more to say about that.
The only thing I would, the only thing I would add is that our, the town's unrestricted general government aid relies almost entirely on state lottery revenues, which are declining, are still declining rapidly, and projections are showing that that could be down to 30%. So there's definitely the possibility that this, that our state aid could be even lower than what we're projecting.
Yeah, and, and I guess I would just remind people that, I mean, this process could have gone on for another 10 months and, and, you know, kept getting in new information, but we have to, at some point, we just have to say, this is what, this is our best estimate and this is what we can do, and we, we're going to have to try to live with these numbers. And if we have to come back at a special town meeting to, you know, to adjust things or whatever we got to do, clearly we'll have to do, but at some point, we just have to, we have to pick numbers and go. So that's our best guess at this point. Local receipts is, that'd be what, meals tax and?
Yeah, the, the biggest chunk of this one is licenses and permits, especially building permits.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so we've reduced that dramatically, given the, the level of business activity. And we're clearly going to see an impact at the end of FY20 as well, but this was, you know, this is clearly at the very, the first quarter of FY21 is going to be pretty, pretty bad. So we're, we're really knocking our numbers back as far as that goes. And then offset receipts, reserve receipts, and then other revenue sources. Other revenue sources is, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, on the reserve receipts, this reflects applying the public safety mitigation funds to the payment.
Right, yeah.
On the full payoff of the ladder truck and also to, to some recurring personnel costs.
Right, so our, our intent for this year was we want, we had a choice, we looked at either paying off the ladder truck over one year or two years. We had initially thought we were going to do it over the two years, pay half of it this year, half of it next year. And the more we looked at it, the more we thought that it just made more sense to pay for this in FY21. We have the money in hand for the mitigation funds, so we always, you know, that's money that comes in now that we apply to next year. And we don't know if that will come in the same next year, I mean, just given the whole uncertainty of things, I mean, it's, they're contractually, they're obligated, but we just don't know. So we thought, have the money this year, why don't we actually just pay off the ladder truck? It clearly saves, it does save some interest, but that wasn't the driving factor, it was only, that was only about $4,000, I believe.
Yep.
The driving factor was, let's, we just, next year is so uncertain, even more uncertain than this year and, and, and probably worse financially. So pay it while we have it, and that was what we decided to do, was to pay that off. Out of, out of that, it's not through taxes, it's through the safety mitigation funds, so it's not an impact on tax bills.
Excuse me, Stan, I think there's an audience member that has their hand up.
Yep.
Peter Hoffman had his hand up.
Okay.
Do you still have a question? Want to throw your hand up real quick? Okay, hold on, here he comes. Go ahead, Peter, your microphone's open.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. So I, I'm, I'm a little surprised to see 4.1% overall increase, given what we've just gone through in the last two months or three months. Is that, is that, I mean, obviously, that's intentional, nobody's.
Yep.
Sleep the switch, but it's just shocking to think that we'd have any increase, let alone 4.1% increase. Is there any explanation?
Yes, there, there definitely is. Stan, would you like me to take, would you like me to just take a piece of that? Cause a.
I would love, I would love you to.
Okay, all right. So a couple of the biggest reasons for this increase is, one, the full payoff of the ladder truck. That payoff of the ladder truck adds about 100, a little over $115,000 to the amount of revenues that have to be used for the budget and the expenses on the budget. So they're directly offset. So that's over, a little over $115,000. Additionally, the Finance Committee has voted to recommend establishing a contingency line in the budget that's funded entirely from free cash, which is in, in large part or almost entirely, not almost entirely, it's in large part responsive to COVID-19 and the costs that might be incurred because of COVID-19 in the coming year, that's $140,000. It's coming only from free cash, it's not coming from the tax levy, and that's an amount that, that's on the budget and an amount that's being applied from revenues from free cash. Other than that, the increases, and Stan, I can, when you're ready, I can go back to the budget sheet so we can, we can kind of see what the budget sheet.
Yeah, I mean, now might be a good time to talk about that contingency.
Okay, okay, so we'll go to the, we'll go to the budget sheet.
I mean, unless, unless Peter has a more specific question or a response to that portion of it, I'd like to explain what the contingency fund, since that is such a large portion of this.
Yeah, so let me, let me jump in and just say the optics of it, while it might be justified is, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem to strike me as desirable. Just the optics, no.
Okay, well, I understand that.
Financial piece of it.
Yep.
Okay, so you have to understand, I guess, I guess the only thing I would say is.
You keep in mind that there are contracted raises in pay for employees in various collective bargaining units, and some of that relates to the fact that, yes, you will have an increase in your cost, your total budget. And until you come to the point where you renegotiate a new, new contracts in those areas, that's, that's something that does always affect every year's budget.
Yeah, I'm, I don't dispute that there's a necessity to increase certain line items, regardless of whether we want to or not. But given the severe strain that we've all gone through, whether it be a municipality or an individual or therefore the real estate taxes that an individual pays, it's hard to imagine an increase. And that doesn't even include the recent week that we've just gone through.
I know, Stan, you want to go through the, the budget line, but I, I again want to reiterate, and I, Peter, I understand the optics of it. And Stan, I do have the contingency policy and procedure available for showing tonight too, if you'd like to get into that.
I mean, it's pretty boilerplate. I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I just, conceptually, I just wanted to say that this contingency fund is here to offset expected costs and therefore costs related specifically to, to COVID. And, and this budget is going up due to costs, I mean, potentially due to costs to COVID. And if we don't have those costs, then we don't expend these contingencies, contingency funds, and the free cash isn't, is not touched. So we've not added the 4.1% to the, to the budget. We, the only reason we're at 4.1% is because we are being conservative and being pessimistic and saying that we have a potential of $140,000 worth of costs that are outside of our control and that we need to somehow try to account for them, but may, or may or may not happen, which is why we're doing them under a contingency.
I'm seeing Molly's chat, which is clearly justified, but in the end, what will the, the abatement amount be? I think you touched on that earlier. What will the total abatement amount be as forecasted?
The amount, yeah, we touched on that earlier. The amount that is, is budgeted for assessment, I'm sorry, for assessors overlay for an allowance for abatements and exemptions is $250,000. That would be in addition to any amount that is currently in assessors overlay. So that is, we're just, we're trying to, we're trying to project accurately. We honestly don't know what's going to come in for abatements, just as Stan explained, but we are actually trying to budget for that appropriately.
I'll make this my last question. What was the, the increase from last year to this year in percentage?
Budget, budget, last year to this year, yes, I do have that. Don't, I give me one moment.
Increase in what?
Percentage wise?
Yeah.
I believe it was 16, 16 and a half, no, was it 16 and a half percent or six and, I'm sorry, six and a half percent might have been the bottom line budget increase.
Okay, so six versus four.
Six and a half percent.
It's striking, it's striking, but thank you very much.
Sure. Okay.
So I guess I, so I guess what I would say on the expense side of things is Barry has already said clearly that there's, and it probably is, everyone understands there are contractual, there are contractual increases that we're obligated to pay. We have tried to hold the line pretty much across the board on pay increases, step increases. We, we have not put in any of that for actual town employees as opposed to, you know, school assessments. So I, you know, separate from what they're, what the schools are doing for teachers, whatever, I mean, our assessments are our assessments. But, so we've tried to, we, we basically have said zero increase from last year except for contractual obligations. So that's where kind of our starting point for the entire expense side of the budget and plugging in what the school assessments were and, and then all of our numbers for, I don't think we need to go through this line by line, but there are, there are some, there are some lines that, that did go up on some very legitimate reasons. And there, other than that, we, we literally were trying, or did our best effort to keep things to the zero, basically a zero increase from last year if possible.
Excuse me, Stan, can I, can I just add that Stan is, Stan is right, non-union employees are getting zero COLIS in FY21, they are not budgeted in here, and our three contract employees for the town itself are also going to be foregoing their contractual wage increases for FY21. And, and I just want to show, you see here, the total general government increase for FY21 is $128,479. And you see that the contingency line itself adds $140,000. So if that contingency line wasn't added, there would be a net reduction in general government. So if, these are things that, you know, like Stan said, this is, the contingency line is absolutely a safety net because of COVID and other things. So just as Stan said, there are, there were legitimate reasons for, for trying to put that in, so we would have something to fall back on because of the anticipated ongoing expenses.
And actually, Margaret, can I, I'd like to rethink, can you, could you throw up that policy for me, please? Cause I, I just want to highlight the things that we're, that we're applying that money for.
Yeah. I'll scroll right down to this section, right, there you go, this right here. You have to take away the, the.
I'm sorry, so.
Oh, I did it again, I'm sorry. I just, I flipped them up, okay, let me, let me bring it up.
Cause my eyes aren't very good, but I did nothing change.
Yeah, looks, still looks like a budget to me.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, how's that?
Getting there, okay. So we, there were five things that we, that we were looking to pay under the contingency. $40,000 is for ALS interstep costs, mostly related to River Bridge due to COVID or CO, or and/or, or to COVID-19 related intercepts at River Bridge. Full-time firefighter, half-year wages, effective, free call activity at River Bridge, that's not necessarily COVID-related, but it's, it's, if we do, if we do indeed see those additional calls, that's money that, that we would be paying towards that. And then again, we're not, we're not going to have any real choice if there's, if there's calls, they have to go out. Additional fire department, EMS department, on-call personnel costs due to increased calls, again, to River Bridge. Market wage adjustments, so we did classification, very prepared by human error. So this is, Margaret, can you, I'm sorry, can you refresh me on this one too? So this is.
We are, yeah, we're undergoing a, an HR study, compensation and classification. As we mentioned, there are no COLIS that have been issued for non-union employees for FY21. However, the study may find that there are some of our positions that fall far behind the market median and mean range for comparable positions in other towns. And this would allow for some adjustment to those positions that are falling far, that have fallen far behind those comps.
Okay, and then the last one is COVID-19 qualifying personnel expenses related to families, first response, emergency paid sick leave, that's very directly COVID. I would also point out that all of these contingency funds have to be approved by both the Select Board and by the Finance Committee. These don't just kick in, these are not just bills that are submitted that June will then just have to pay. These are, this is just like, this is almost. will then just have to pay. These are, this is just like, this is almost just like the reserve fund transfers. This has to be, these costs have to be justified. They have to be passed. They have to be approved by the select board, and they have to be approved by the finance committee as well. So there's, there are strict controls on how this gets paid out. This is not just added to the tax bill. Again, this is free cash, and it is a contingency. It will only be spent if it needs to be spent. And if it's not spent, this money just reverts back to free cash and does not impact the budget. So that's, I mean, I think in a nutshell, that's really what I have. Margaret, was there anything else that we really needed to point out budget-wise? I think we've, I've certainly talked, I feel like enough. You know, we talked about our expense, trying to hold that line, and I think we've talked about how conservative we're trying to be on the revenue side. So I think that was, and everything is, like I said, it's just so up in the air. And we don't know where the schools are going to be next year, much less, you know, we have their assessment for this year. But next year, it's, we just, we just don't know. And this is the best, this was our best guess.
Yeah, yeah. And I have to say, I think, you know, I think for the finance committee and the board, who both recommended all of the, who both approved all of these recommended budget lines, it's the most educated, best guess we could possibly make at this point in time, knowing that things are still very much up in the air with our economy. And we've tried to, the finance committee has tried to build in these safety nets to protect the town financially so that we don't expose ourselves to revenue shortfalls, or any other, or any other negative, well, severely negative impacts from the health crisis and the economic crisis. So.
And I would also point out that we are in, we are in very good shape financially as a town. And we are in far better shape than a lot of towns. We have over $1 million in stabilization. We're not touching that. I mean, we're not necessarily adding to it this year like we wanted to potentially, but we have, we have the ability to weather this storm. And I'm confident that we have the best people in place to do that. And I don't think anybody just takes these budget numbers and just says, oh, we'll just spend, spend, spend. I think everyone is very, very realistic and understanding that we will, we're only spending what we need to spend.
I'd also like to comment that we also have a good amount of money in free cash, which is not being touched for this meeting, a good deal of it. And that is partly so that we have it to fall back on in the course of the next year if we have other problems, or.
Yep, absolutely.
In budget development a year from now.
Good point, Barry. There's over $865,000 that's still remaining in the free cash balance in case it's needed as the economy declines.
And then beyond that, keep in mind that our budget cycle this year was created into, well, pretty well through February, in a time of prosperity. And from February to May, there was a lot more concern about how things were going to change and the potential negative things that could happen. So there have been revisions down and so on. Next fall, come November, as we start a new budget cycle, we may well, if we find ourselves in a really tough state, our budget cycle is going to be reflecting that from the very beginning. And that would make a big difference in the final outcome of it, should that be the case. Can we go back to the budget numbers now? And we'll kind of go through the other sections of the budget.
Okay. I hope this works. Is it up?
Yes, it is.
I can't see from my, so we just got through general government, right?
Yeah. All right, now, this is, yeah, no, we've done, we've pretty much gone through that unless somebody has a question about general government. I'd like to go to public safety if we could.
Yep, okay.
And just a little tiny, there we are. That's.
Better? Okay.
That's excellent. We have the public safety budget here. You can see the comparative columns going across. The recommended fiscal 21 is what we will be voting on, a total of $2,668,000. This is up a little, but a pretty modest amount considering not everything. Does anybody want to comment or question on any of these items?
We will be addressing an offer from Chief Galvin to freeze his wages. I know it shows, I believe, 3%.
Yes, it shows 3%. And also Chief Clark, who I believe is here as well, had also offered the same, and I've already done so. So these are our contracted employees.
The contracted employees. So Margaret and Chief Galvin and Chief Clark. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
As usual, the motion under this article will have several different sources for money in order to pay all of the different things, but the sum total of it is the $2,668. And it is formed up in the same way as usual, much of it from raise and appropriate taxation, and also from public safety mitigation funds from Highland Park. And then there are a few other things, too, but that's.
Offset receipts for some of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's move on to public works.
Okay.
Good. We have the highway budget, the snow and ice, streetlights, transfer station, cemetery.
Yeah, I guess, Barry, the only thing, I guess I would just point out here is the transfer station is the biggest jump. I think most folks understand where trash, or maybe they don't, but the trash situation in the world today is not unlike the COVID as far as just costs going through the roof. We are not able to send recycling off anymore to China for practically free. And so our costs related to the transfer station have gone up dramatically. That's literally all in costs. And we have tried to minimize that by, we cranked up the fees this year by dramatically, and that's still, does not offset all of it. But the cost of trash removal is gone up dramatically in the world, and we will be paying for it as a town. One thing I would point out, though, is that our dump stickers, our transfer station stickers are still compared to paying to have somebody come and pick up your trash. I think it's about a quarter of what it would cost somebody to come pick up your trash for us to bring ourselves to the transfer station. So it's still, I would say that it's still an excellent value, even at the bumped up numbers.
And the cost of the stickers will be going up to try to offset.
Yeah, they're going from $130 to $190 in that ballpark. And there's the break for, you know, timely pay, I think, and senior citizens. But yeah, it's a big jump.
The Board of Health has done a lot of bargaining over the years to try to get good deals for us in regard to the recycling things. And they've done a good job. The trouble is, their back is against the wall at this point. They're no longer the alternatives that they were before. And now we can't, we can't accomplish some of the things they've been able to in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we don't get money for cardboard anymore. We don't, I mean, I think the only thing we get anything for is maybe the metal. We pay for everything to get rid of now, and not just paying for it. We're paying for it at higher and higher rates, and the trash is not getting, itself is also not getting any cheaper, so.
Are we seeing any questions from anybody on any of this? Let's go to Human Services. The Board of Health, the various services from the Shover Associated Board of Health, Council on Aging, Veterans, and Fleet.
The Council on Aging shows the biggest increases in this category, and that is because there has been a small adjustment to bring the Council on Aging Director's wages to closer to market comps, although they're very, it's still very far off. And so there was a slight adjustment there. And also, the Council on Aging Wages, I'm sorry, the Council on Aging Wages part timeline is to cover van drivers. And as you know, we have a new van. And the hope of the Council on Aging is to try to expand the van service and hire an additional part-time per diem driver or two to be able to expand the service for our seniors.
Yeah, and I can say that the Finance Committee heartily endorses the Council on Aging's use of this van. And I feel like the more it's used, the better. It's a great community service. And while these numbers look like they're, you know, percentage-wise, they're large, they're on pretty small dollar amounts, so they don't amount to, they don't amount to huge dollars. And I think for the service that it's providing, it's just one of those areas that I think is a necessary, is a necessary optic in expenditure.
Keep in mind that Berlin has made some decisions over the years in building Northwood Village, and then Northwood Village 2. And we have one over 55 community, and we have a second one that's to be built shortly. And that, all of these actions that we've taken, in addition to the graying of our own population, has put us in a situation with a much higher percentage-wise elderly population than other communities of our size. And that's something that we've consciously done. And this is a little bit of expense that comes as a result thereof.
Yeah, and I would say that that's still a pretty small expense, given the services that are being provided. And I think that we could go, we could do more, and I'd like to do more.
And our Council on Aging is looking that way, too.
Good.
Culture and Recreation.
Oops, I'll highlight that. There you go.
Relatively small expenditure compared to some of the other sections, as was Human Services. The library is the biggest piece, but that is even, that's a pretty small increase there.
Yes, the library increase is small, and we were careful not to disproportionately cut, when we were cutting our budgets with all these revisions that have had to happen since COVID, we were careful not to disproportionately reduce the library's budget because their state aid is, and their certification is dependent on equity among other departments. So we were cautious of that.
Let's pass on to debt and interest. And this is the area where the money for the ladder truck comes in, particularly under the principal side.
And again, as Stan mentioned before, the ladder truck is on the tax levy now. And through the use of public safety mitigation funds this year, it is going to be entirely paid off. There will be no tax levy applied to the ladder truck payoff. It's all going to come from public safety mitigation.
And our chief, our chief debt and interest money here, other than that, is related to the new highway building.
Yes.
Intergovernmental expenditures. This is, of course, always a big section because it involves all of our schools. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is a small amount. We're a small town in a large region. But the ASABET assessment and the ASABET capital assessment are there. Berlin Memorial Assessment, Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment, and the Tohoto Operating Assessment, and the Tohoto Capital Assessment. And that's where all it is. And there's, yes, there's a lot of money there, but at the same time, the increase is modest. And we did have action by the school committee to reduce three of those lines, taking a look at what was happening in the towns and with financing in general.
You know, I'd like to.
Well, I was just going to say, you, you, go, go.
Over talking. You, you.
Margaret first.
You go.
Okay, I talked with Lynn Ryan, who is our school committee rep for the ASABET School District today. And that school committee is also making the best effort possible to reduce their budget. They are working on it, but we will not have answers on that until after July. But they continue to work on it.
And what I was going to point out about ASABET is that that's strict, that most of that is due, most of that increase is due to increased participation from Berlin at ASABET. It's a per capita, it's a per capita number. It's not that their budget has gone up by 37%. It's that our use of ASABET has gone up by 37%. So we have more students going there. And it's just a direct function of that. Our portion of ASABET, we only comprise about 4% of the population of ASABET, so it's not like we carry a ton of weight with them in their budget. So we're, you know, we're pretty much, our assessment is our assessment. But it's due to per capita, per student, I should say, or per pupil utilization of ASABET. And that number has increased from the prior year. I think it's either four, or five, six students more.
I think it's six.
Then, yeah, six. So it's a thing, it's just something that's pretty much out of our control. But again, I think that it's a great, I think it's a great organization. I've always been super pleased working with them. They've always been super professional and just an amazing group. And they always have their Ts crossed and their Is dotted, and they've got great answers. And they come in early in the process, and they've got their numbers down. And I firmly, firmly believe that they do everything that they can to keep their costs under control.
Any other thoughts from anybody about schools?
There are no hands raised. I'll give one last shout out to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, who does an incredible amount of work for the town for this small assessment that we pay. We get so much out of that organization. And I think, you know, just in the short time I've been here, I can attest to the value that they bring to the town and the entire region.
They have been a significant part of our planning effort. While we have not had professional planners in our own town staff, we've used them to help us with a lot of different areas. Miscellaneous benefits and insurance. Are there any comments from finance about these figures?
No, other than they just keep going up, and we don't have a lot of control over any of them. I mean, these are, this is the section of the budget that's sometimes hard to swallow, but we don't have a lot of control over it. And Dennis has talked about this for years, and past finance chairs have talked about this for years. And it's just, it's, we're really just kind of beholden to the organizations that charge these numbers. I mean, Chapter 32B, Worcester Regional Retirement, these are just things we don't have a lot of control over. Workers' comp, clearly.
If I could just add to what Stan just mentioned, the two lines, line 114 and 115, unemployment and health and dental, when we had an early revenue surplus, we recognized the effects, the economic effects of COVID-19, and what that could mean for employees and their families. We also realized what it could potentially mean for the town. And there were many, many municipalities across the state and across the country who were talking furloughs and unemployment. And therefore, at that time, we increased, we budget only what we would potentially spend for unemployment. We do not, you know, we do not subscribe to any kind of unemployment insurance. We are essentially self-insured here. So we thought, if we fall into dire circumstances. here. So we thought, if we fall into dire circumstances, which we don't believe we're going to, but if we were to fall into dire circumstances and have to take these types of employment measures, we wanted to be sure that we had the safety net under unemployment insurance to be able to cover some of those costs. And with health and dental, we recognized that employees may have family members, may have a spouse, for example, who, if they lose their job and their benefits, our employee, it may turn into a qualifying event where our employee would have to subscribe to our insurance. And so we bumped that up as well.
Okay, if there are no comments in regards to any of this, we can move on to Article 18.
Okay. Let me go back to the warrant. Everybody still awake? Okay.
Did anyone say no?
They were sleeping.
Oh, wait a minute, let me, wait a minute, cancel warrant. All right, I think I should have it here somewhere. Yep. Okay. I think we're here. Okay. Capital Budget.
Article 18 is the capital budget. And there is a, it's $376,200 to cover the capital budget. And we kick this up a little bit more, Margaret, we can see all the items of the capital budget.
Well, they're on different pages, so, but.
Well, let's take the first three.
Okay.
And they're on a page. This is the contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. And the second is the personal protective equipment program, or fire and EMS, both of these. And then finally, the replacement of a police cruiser, police vehicle. The notes give a little description of what each one of these is. And these three, plus two more that we'll talk about in a minute when we look at them, represent the capital budget, which is being proposed in one article and one book. Other comments on these items from either Finance Committee or capital planning.
I would ask that Michael Ginsburg comment for Finance, since he is our representative on capital planning.
And Anna's here for, Anna's here for capital.
Anna speak first.
Thank you. So in regards to capital planning, I would say that this year, we started out with $1.3 million in requests. We did a great job, so much thanks to Margaret's help and guidance in reducing that number to approximately 900,000. And that 900,000 included a stable, the establishment of a stabilization fund for capital planning items going forward. Unfortunately, due to the COVID situation, we then reevaluated, as everybody has so far, reduced it to, reduced our capital plan to these six items that we're looking at today. So first, the, the three that are up on the screen now. And the first two are the personal protective equipment that our fire and EMS desperately need. And we gave them 50% of it last year. And this is the 50% for this year. And certainly, we didn't feel that we could leave them hanging as far as their personal protection was needed. And then finally, the police vehicle replacement, we tend to do this every year. It's part of our green program, as well as part of our recommendations every year. So that's those first three items.
Margaret, continue with four and five.
Can do. So four and five, the $20,000 for the video and security upgrades in the public safety building. Unfortunately, it was discovered months ago that our video and security system in public safety was not up to date, and was ineffective. And some areas that desperately needed to be covered were not covered. So this is an immediate need for repair and upgrading of the system that we have. And then finally, the parking lot repair, that's for the public safety building. That's the entire parking lot at Public Safety. So going all the way around the building. And we have been granted $100,000 in state grants for the parking lot, only for this year. So if we postpone the parking lot repair, we will lose out on 50%, on getting 50% of this project paid for through state grants. So even though it says $205,000 on the budget line, it's actually, will be reimbursed $100,000, but only if we do it this year. Any questions?
Just representing the Finance Committee, I don't really have anything to add. These are all public safety issues. And Anna pointed out, the, the last one, the, if you walk around the parking lot, there is definitely a need for replacements. And we do have considerable, considerable support for that now.
The only thing I would add to that for Finance, Mike, would just be that, we could point out the source of funds on all of this is, the only thing from free cash is that last item, and half of that is being paid for with a grant. So.
Correct.
Most, most of this is being paid for out of mitigation funds.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Now to Barry, would you like to move on? Would you like to move on?
Yep.
Okay. This is also Capital Planning Committee's article.
So again, as Capital Planning Committee, we were very excited to have our budget originally allow us to maintain or to create a capital stabilization fund, so that in the future, we have some money saved away for projects and items that might need a little assistance to come to fruition at that point in time, without increasing the tax levy or the debt to the town. So unfortunately, due to the COVID situation, we did still want to establish and create this capital, capital stabilization fund. But we did greatly reduce the amount of fundage that we wanted to put into it. So we are taking $100 from free cash, and an additional $4,341 from the Highlands, Highland Commons capital contribution. So again, it's not coming from tax levy. It's coming from, a little bit from free cash, and mostly from Highland Commons.
I believe we started with the plan to put $100,000 into that fund.
It was 125.
125, okay. And then we divided it by 1,000, a little more than 1,000, we realized the, the current state. And, but we did, felt it very important to start this. And even if it's just $100.
And we would, we would anticipate in future years, that sometimes when we, when we have an anticipated major expenditure coming up, we might put money in it a year or two ahead, so that we'll be in better shape to actually pay for what we're going to buy, and not have to borrow as much and have as much interest to pay on.
Correct.
Yeah, that is the goal of capital planning, is to hopefully even out over the years our capital expenses, so that they stay relatively consistent without any surprises. And hopefully, this stabilization fund will help us do that as well.
And I think the Capital Planning Committee, correct me if I'm wrong, Anna, but I, I think the goal would be to try to programmatically fund this, year on year, in order to build this, this source of funding for capital needs.
Prior to COVID, we were talking about a 10% of our budget per year being added to stabilization fund.
Or free cash. It was from free.
Yeah. But coming from the, the, not the money that we have allocated, that we're allocated to, in theory, move around. Yeah. So, so that was our original plan, was to add 10%. And this approximate $4,000 would be slightly more than 10% of our current $372,000 recommendations. So we're sticking with that 10% at the moment.
More than 1%.
You have a phone number on it?
Oh, yeah. You must be right. It's 1%, not 10%.
1%, 1 and 1/2%, like 1 and 1/4%.
It's seed funding, right?
It's funding.
I'd like to open the account.
Okay.
Michael, is Stan, is there further comment from Finance Committee about this?
No, I, we support it.
Yes, we do.
Okay. We'll move on? We'll move on.
Article 21. These are roll special articles from 2009, 14, 15, and 19. And this is the remaining balance of these accounts after the things have been done that were supposed to have been done. And we have the amounts given. And the total of that is to be turned back to the general fund. Article 21 is the annual town election, which is on the following Monday. Only the hours of 12 to 4, people are urged to get, to vote early, to get absentee ballot to vote. And that will greatly decrease the number of people that have to actually go to the polls, and will cut down the amount of interpersonal relations that we have, thereby interpersonal contact, and, and help people avoid issues related to the coronavirus. So hopefully, many people will take advantage of that. In the town report is a diagram of how we're going to have people enter and leave. We're going to have everybody parked behind the building, and enter from one door, and leave from the other door, so that we'll have less and less possibility of people being in close contact with other voters. And then when they leave, they will be leaving by a difference, all around the back of the building, and out, so that we'll, again, keep everything flowing in good, good manner, and not have reasons that things get plugged up, or people are waiting, or are getting close lines, and so on. More, more arrangements are going with that, to make sure that things will be, we'll be protecting people as much as possible. And the same thing goes for the town meeting itself. We're still in the process of developing ideas, but we're going to have barriers at the check-ins. We're going to have things handed out in a baggie to the attendees. And as much as possible, reduce the amount of close contact between the people running the meeting and the individuals. We'll have our seats set up, so they're six feet from other people's seats. There will be some of them that will be in pairs, so that people that live in the same house can sit together. But we're trying as much as possible to make the whole thing work, so that we, we'll reduce the likelihood of any transmission of the virus. Some of those plans are still in development. And as we know more, we'll get the details together. But hopefully, we can have a town meeting that works out well. And hopefully, it won't take any more time than it has this evening.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing now. Barry, do you want to take general, general comments and questions? Is there anybody that, would you like to do that?
Yeah, if anybody wants to.
Okay, so folks, if you want to raise your hand, you hit the raise your hand button. Or if you're on a phone, you can press star nine.
There is a comment that a form to request an early voting ballot can be downloaded from the town website, or from the Mass Secretary of Commonwealth's website.
Town Clerk's office is working extra time to handle all of this. And the point is, it can all be handled in the office and by an individual, and avoid a lot of personal contact that would normally come if everybody came and lined up at an election.
Somebody want to read Scott's comment? Thank you. Thanks to everyone for doing this. We're hoping for a smooth town meeting.
Thank you, everybody, for being involved and watching. We have the motions all written for the town meeting. As we do a few final touches on those, they'll be prepared and handed out as usual to the people that will be making the motions. The biggest thing is that we be alert to how it's to be. It's always been my desire not to have the town meeting too scripted, because it gives more sense of spontaneity, and people feel a bit more like they have, have an effect on what's going on in the town. This particular year, I've opted to have us try to have it as scripted as possible. And that is partly to make it easier for people, and to make it a faster process, so that we won't have to spend as much time there. And so that we can hopefully be prepared in a way that maybe even some folks will decide they don't have to come. And again, decrease the amount of personal contact and chances of, of virus transmission. But we're, we're trying to do as much as we can to make it all work out. And hopefully, we'll have a nice turnout that's manageable, and that we can get the business done in as, in as efficient a way as possible.
Excuse me, Barry, there's a, Barry, there's a hand raised. Peg Stone has her hand raised.
Just a small plug before we end the meeting, that next week, we have Coffee Talk. I don't know what version we're on. We'll be sending information out about, about six. Awesome. Thank you. Sending out information around that, another opportunity to either talk about this, talk about upcoming things that are going on, find out what's keeping you up at night, as always with all the other formats. We're here to listen. We're not here to debate. We're not here to discuss. But we want to hear what's going on with you. So gather your friends. And same time next week, we'll see on Zoom for Coffee Talk 6.0.
And I, and I do want to add that I believe Conservation will have a few minutes to talk about, you know, some things that they're working on.
And the library, the library subject update.
Yes. And thank you to everybody who's gotten this, gotten this to this point. I just, I'm amazed. You all are doing a great job.
I want to say, if anybody notes something that you see as an issue or a problem, and, and something else that we can plug, as I say, I'm trying to make this one just as much planned ahead as possible, so that we have a chance to make it efficient and quick, and, and avoid as much long-term contact among people as we can.
Yeah, the more questions we can answer beforehand, the better.
That's right.
And they still are being answered on Facebook and up on our website, under News and Announcements. So we've had 11 questions answered so far, and they're all up online.
We have all of the people that have been at this meeting are perfectly willing and happy to entertain questions individually as well, in pertaining to the things they're doing. So I urge any citizens that are involved to contact any of us, and we'll try to get you the answers to any questions you have, or listen to your suggestions. It may help the whole process work better. Margaret, have you any parting comment here?
I, the only thing I, the only thing I have to say before you close, Barry, is that this year, this is the start of a bumpy ride economically. And we are going to be in for a couple of tight years here. And we are just going to keep doing our best, best with conservative revenue projections, and, and making sure that the town is in good financial shape. shape.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. I think we're ready to go, and we look forward to seeing people at other gatherings like this, as well as the ones where we all get together on the 20th.
That'll be so good. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for attending, everyone.